All right, so I'm going to call the meeting of the Board of Selectment to order. Motion to, yeah. I'll get this right. It's Monday, July 25th, and it is 6:16 PM. Can I get a waving to read the Zoom instructions?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Nichols, aye.
Wait, wait, I.
Benoit, aye. And we have minutes, Treasury, and warrant payroll. We can do the pledge, I was gonna do it, but next, but we can do the pledge.
The pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just could I add?
Okay.
I know you better. Motion to approve Treasury warrant 22- W28, and warrant 23-2, and payroll 22 PW28, and payroll 23 PW2.
A second? Tom, seconds.
Second.
Roll call.
Clock, aye.
Galvin, aye.
Nichols, aye, excluding any COA wages.
Wait, wait, aye.
Benoit, aye.
Motion to approve minutes from January 11, July 11, as written.
Second.
Roll call.
Clock, aye.
Galvin, a scan.
Nichols, aye.
Wait, wait, aye.
Benoit, aye. All right. Anyone here for public comment tonight? No? All right, so we have a public hearing for Marty's Convenience and Dolce Vita Catering, both seeking common vic licenses. We have to do them separately? Okay. So, a public hearing for Marty's Convenience Store first. They're at 529 East County Road, and they're looking for a common vic license. I believe the last time you were here, or the time before, we did a public license for them, and now they're looking for a common vic. And since nobody's here, does anybody here have discussion about it?
I think it's a good idea that moved into the area, but I'd like to make a motion if it's all right by everybody to approve a common vic license for Marty's Convenience Store on East County Road, Rutland, Mass.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Clock, aye.
Galvin, aye.
Nichols, aye.
Wait, wait, aye.
Benoit, aye. Is there a motion to close?
I don't think there was, but maybe there was. I'll make, yeah. I'll second it.
Roll call.
Clock, aye.
Galvin, aye.
Nichols, aye.
Wait, wait, aye.
Benoit, aye. Oh, stupid person, okay. I'd like to open the public hearing at 6:18, 19, for Dolce Vita Catering Company at 24 Palmagussit Road. They are looking for a common vic license as well.
And if I remember correctly, we had also approved a liquor license for this facility also, but this is the write-down by what used to be.
Across from the ball field, right?
Right, what used to be KP's, right? So they're looking for a common vic now.
Correct.
So they're gonna open a restaurant? Is that what you're telling me?
No. They are catering.
You need a common vic license for catering?
So they're sometimes going to host functions at the actual location.
Oh, okay, okay. That's fine.
I thought they were gonna do pizza or something, no?
She said maybe down the road, but right now they're just doing the food truck and the catering.
They're going slowly into it because of the economy and lack of people wanting to work and whatnot, so they're going into it slow. I'm glad to hear that. So do I have a motion to?
I have a motion to approve common vic license for Dolce Vita.
Dolce Vita.
Second.
Any discussion? Roll call.
Clock, aye.
Galvin, aye.
Nichols, aye.
Wait, wait, aye.
And Benoit, aye. Excellent. Can I have a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Wait, wait, a second.
Roll call.
Clock, aye.
Galvin, aye.
Nichols, aye.
Wait, wait, aye.
And Benoit, aye. Thank you. All right. Now we can move on to department head updates, and tonight we have Anita. You can stay there, or you can come up, or...
Can you hear me all right? I can. My cough isn't contagious, it's just annoying, but get too close. Brought a few things tonight, some of them are, well, the update I think is first, and then some other things for you to vote on are later on. So, basically, I'm assuming you all got those nice little postcards in the mail, wanting you to send in and get a, well, 248 people have already sent them back to us. So it's already started. The state sent those cards out on their expense. The cards are postage-paid for the voters, and the state is covering that. Unfortunately, the ballots that are going out, our office has to pay for, or it's our postage budget. And it's hard to tell, I mean, we have, right now, we've got over 6,600 active voters. I look back to see in 2020 how many people voted in the primary and who requested mail and ballots, and it was just under 1,500. I think it'll be more this time around, and it's kind of hard to gauge, but we're already starting scanning them in and logging them, and we've had all the ballots delivered, so it's gonna be a lot of work, but anything I think that helps voter turnout is a good thing overall. I'm hoping, because it's an unfunded mandate, that at some point we'll be able to get reimbursed for at least our postage, but that won't be, you know, until down the road. So, and I had alerted Becky to, you know, that we were probably gonna see an uptick in postage costs. The state recently updated the voter registration, well, the Voter Act, and there's a few new provisions in it besides the vote by mail and in-person voting. One of the new provisions that I wanted to bring to your attention is that in the past we use police officers as details at the polling place, and we're only, we only need one at the library, there's one, you know, just one polling precinct here, but at Naqog we have two precincts, but because they're in the same location, we can have just one But the change, and I'm not sure why, it's, your board now, it's your duty to appoint the police officer detail rather than the chief of police. So, I know, it's in the law. I'm sure it's something that you can delegate to him, but I think that your board will probably want to set the numbers, and we can think about it, but the September 6 primary is on a Tuesday, and school will be in session then, so if Nick thinks that, you know, that he can, you know, have the manpower, I don't think it would hurt to have two details at Naqog that day. I think with the early voting and the vote by mail, it won't be, you know, a really heavy turnout there, but probably just, it might be a good idea to at least think about that. Some of the other changes that the police detail always helped us enforce at the voting precincts, there was something called the 150-foot rule, and there can't be any politicking around the entrance to any of the voting locations. And that was not, that didn't apply to early voting locations, but now it does with the new law. Some town clerks are looking at having police details for all their early voting hours, but I talked to Nick, and I think, well, we emailed, I think for now, I think we would be fine, unless we have a problem enforcing that 150-foot rule or something, I don't think that we need to go there yet, because it would obviously be an added expense on police wages. But, and the vote by mail is now mandatory for all elections, so in 2020 it was a special act because of COVID, but now, and that includes our municipal election in May. There is a provision that local communities could opt out of the vote by mail for local elections, and your board would have to hold a public hearing and do a public roll call vote to not allow vote by mail. It would have to be 45 days before the election, and it has to be before every town election. You can't just blanket say, "We're not gonna do that." I go back and forth, I think, you know, I don't think it's something we need to discuss now, we can wait probably until, you know, until after the beginning of the year. I think that people are getting used to it, vote by mail, and if we did do that, if we didn't do it for municipal, I just don't know what the fallout would be, but it's something that we should probably consider. It could also raise participation in local elections if we did that. The other thing is, in-person early voting is mandatory for all state elections, but it's not mandatory for local elections, and I don't see any reason that we would ever have to do that for our local election. But, and the mandatory early voting right now stands at, it's, there's a seven-day period before September 6, and also a 14-day period before the November 18 election. So, we're mandated, a lot of it's during our regular business hours, but if we have a lot of traffic, we can't, there's just not enough space in our office to do that. We had tried, you know, once in a while, to, when it was a slower vote, to have a booth set up in our office. Candace and I have been talking, and I think we're gonna see what happens for that last week in August, leading up to the primary election, and try to just do it out of our office, but if it gets too busy, we're gonna have to move downstairs. And then, and I know that we'll be really busy in October for that 14-day period, so I think it's gonna have to be downstairs in the town hall, but just something to think about, so.
If I may, well, just for the space concerns, because I think the basement of town hall has been, there's been discussions about what that currently is used for and may potentially be used for, so I think needs to be mindful that it will likely need to have access for voting, at least early voting, in the second half of October, potentially even August, end of August.
Yeah, I've talked to Karina, too.
Okay. But I just know for...
Karina, we had a conversation with Karina about this, and she's all completely ready to coordinate with you however it needs to be done. There's a lack of space everywhere, but, and I'm sure it'll work out, but it'll even be easier on our office if we can do it upstairs, you know, in August, but in October, I just, I know the volume, you know, we just can't do that, so we have to be downstairs. And the other concern is, there's a handicap machine that if it's just upstairs, we don't really have a spot for that. It's really bulky, unfortunately, and even though not many people use it, those that do really appreciate it, and by law we have to make that available, too, so. But it seems like, I don't like talking about September already, but it's around the corner, so. Other than that, we, other than elections, we sent out, I think it was Candace mailed over 500 cards to delinquent people that had not gotten their dog license for 2022, and we're getting a very good response and the late fees, so. And then what we're hoping is after, they've been coming in on a daily basis, and then after we hear back, it's helping us get our records cleaned up, because there's a box to check off if you don't own the dog anymore. And then, after that dies down in a couple of weeks, we're going to see if the dog officer would be able to take a look at our list and see if she could encourage some people to get their dogs licensed, so. But that's basically what's been keeping us busy. And I don't know if you want to do the other two things now, or after Joe, he's been here? Because I'm fine.
Does anybody have any more conversation with Anita for this, or what she's brought up? Any questions about the department in general?
Thank you for that update on the Voter Act updates, because I know it's a lot for us to try to keep the polls on, so having the highlights, thank you.
I think if you, if you could just maybe talk with Nick, just, we'll talk to Nick and do what we need to do, but if you could have the initial conversations with how many he thinks and the hours and all that, so that he can come to us with a... Basically, there is an officer supposed to be there for any time that the polls open. And it's from 7:00 to 8:00? Right, 7:00 AM to 8:00 PM? Some communities, the police officers actually transport the ballots, but we've always done that ourselves, because we have a vault at Naqog, so we can lock the ballots in at Naqog ahead of time, and we also have a vault here, so that we can secure them when we set up, so that it's not, we don't have to bring them over in the morning. And a lot of towns, their DPW helps them set up, which ours does at some times, but the biggest problem is we can't get into Naqog until after 5 o'clock, and then that would be Joe having to pay somebody overtime to help us, so we have high school kids that help us out and do the setups, so.
Well, if you need help setting up, let me know. I'll personally, I'd love to help.
Wonderful. That's the other thing, though. Oh, well, that's on the next thing, it's under New Business, so.
All right, thank you. Joe?
I'm gonna stay back here, if that's all right? Can everybody hear me?
Yes.
I'm gonna basically go through the major stuff we do, roads, water, sewer, a couple items, all right? So first off, we'll start with roads, because that's what people see most often. The work completed through the Transportation Bond Bill through the Commonwealth on 56 and 68, for the most part, are done. 68 is definitely all done, 56 has some cleanup along the sides of the road and some driveways that still need to be patched and repaired, as well as some concerns at the intersection of Main and Maple. Some good news on all that, though, the state put over 2.5 million into 56 when you combine both sides, and that's a huge win for the town. We may not see that money from the state for some years. They put over 800,000 into 68. I estimate we're probably gonna get at least five to 10 years out of the work they did on 68, and maybe as much as 20 on 56. So that's a big win for the town. There were some quality control problems on the Palmagussit portion of 56, which resulted in some additional paving on Pleasantale. The state, and we negotiated with the contractor, instead of tearing up some pavement on Palmagussit, we were able to get them to agree to pave more here in town, and that's what resulted in Pleasantale being paved, okay? In addition, some additional stuff, we also negotiated with the state to get done on Palmagussit. We had a failed culvert in the vicinity of Rufus Putnam, it's been a problem for many years, the state actually replaced that for us while they were here. And they also did maybe 500 feet of subdrain just south of Britton, which I think will help with ice conditions and make that road a lot safer in the long run. In town here, some roadwork we've worked on, we're working on, we just started doing some dust control on gravel roads. It's been many years since the town's done any dust control or treating them with calcium chloride and solution. We do that for a bunch of reasons, just over and above the fact that people get sick of the dust all over their cars. Gravel roads can lose as much as two to three inches of gravel annually in just dust, so by treating them, we may actually lessen how often we have to put fresh gravel back. So it's a win-win. So we're doing that in-house, and that started last week, so we've done, I want to say, Sassowana and a portion of Irish. There was a lot of talk about Wachusett Road a few months back, and there was some question about the actual list of state of town roads. We sent more than half a dozen locations to the state to have our list updated, we haven't heard back yet, but those were all filed. We recently applied for, and were granted, signed a contract, Gary signed it, for winter recovery funds for this year from the Commonwealth, and we got some $263,734 allocated to the town. It has to go to things like striping and resurfacing, it can't go to cover snow and ice deficit, but we have roughly a year to spend it, and we got that money, and we're working on some plans on how to do that now. Any questions on roads? Water. If you don't know already, most of the state's in a drought. DEP issued a Level 2 drought warning, which basically means folks shouldn't be using their outside sprinklers. We put some stuff on Facebook today and on the town website, you're only supposed to be watering at night, one day a week, and it's not just Rutland, it's across the board, so if people complain about it, it's statewide, and it doesn't, it's not all that hard to figure out, it's been so warm and dry. The state's concerned about water supplies. We have some lingering construction as a result of that most recent contract that put the new water main in Palmagussit, we're doing some pressure managing devices, they're supposed to be installed on Lower Main Street to cut down on some of the breaks down by Pleasantale Road, and as of July 1st, no more new sprinkler systems. That's by the bylaw. On the wastewater side, we do have a sewer worker opening at DPW, we have had some interest, we're probably gonna start interviewing in the next couple weeks. Several small pump station repairs have been completed, and we're in the process of doing a large inflow and infiltration contract repair to the trunks that were owned by DCR. Sewer treatment assessment that we pay annually to the Upper Blackstone is down some 8% to 10%, and transportation costs to move through the city of Worcester and Holden is down 26%. Those are good numbers, I think the Upper Blackstone one, as long as they don't get forced to do any major capital improvements via EPA, that number could continue to go down, so that rig payers will benefit from that in the long run. Our sidewalk job on Maple Ave is roughly 85% complete. We had several change orders to that work, basically because when we put their job up for bid, we did not expect to get the paving done on Maple Ave, but we had to take advantage of that state funding when we could, so a lot of berm was added, additional drainage and some other safety aspects of that work were added that were over and above the original bid, that'll be covered by Chapter 90. On buildings, I just got a couple highlights here. The new heater AC units at the library were installed, there were three of them, they were installed with a crane, it was around 65,000. Two of them were in failure, so I think that's a good, I'm glad we got it done, I was here on the hottest day of the year, a couple, like a week ago, and it was nice and cool in there, and that room was full of kids, so that's a good thing. We had an article to do some repairs to the sewer at the pool house, we had that sewer evaluated and modified some of the plumbing, and knock on wood, they haven't had trouble, we did not have to break the floor. So we're holding on to that money for now, we didn't have to spend it all, but the sewer at the pool house continues to work. Last season, if you guys recall, we, there had a lot of sewer trouble, so we had the whole line cleaned and some new sewers, some new toilets and fixtures installed, and they have not had any trouble this season, so that's good, because God knows, the pool's been in high demand. We fixed the woodhouse ladder, the ladder where the person got hurt?
Yes, that's the ladder.
That's done, and we have definitely taken advantage of the one person who took the summer job. It's made a big difference in our ability to get some other work done around town, so that's been great, thank you. And if you have any questions, I can take any questions.
George, it's for clarification. For the summer help, you had two positions, I think, that were funded, but you were only able to fill one, is that?
Only able to fill one.
Okay. So thanks for taking a manage of that, you know, additional.
That person has worked out great, we tried, you know, we put stuff out there, but we weren't able to get the second person.
Do they want overtime? I'm just wondering, I mean, if we funded two positions, we've got one person, and you need more work, and they're willing to work more?
Well, it's an article, so we'll probably try, and if we don't have funding for it next year, we'll use it to augment any funding that comes about. That was ARCRA-funded, it's not coming off tax levy, so we'll hold on to that money if we can.
Joe, real quick, back to the sprinklers?
Yes.
I just was curious, is that just, you can't draw from town water, or is that also well water? How does that, how does that apply?
If you have a well, but, you know, you're welcome to do whatever you want, but the drought advisory, so if you have, if your sprinkler is supplied with well water, you can, obviously, it's your water, but the state asks that people hold off because there's a statewide drought.
Sure.
Anything else? All right, thank you, Joe, very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Lots happening, lots of good stuff happening, thank you. All right. Gary, do you have an update for us for the last eight hours?
Sure, let's try this. I've got a couple things. First thing, and I've mentioned this to most of you, all of you, though we do have several important meetings coming up this week. The first one will be tomorrow with the Rutland Regional, the stakeholders, all of those will be in attendance except the town of Warren. That's 10 o'clock, and also if you are aware of that, so you'll be there. That's at 10 o'clock in my office, so we'll discuss assessments, and this, as you all know, this was just a step to make sure that we're being as transparent as possible in just informing all stakeholders of where we are, why we do what we do, and so on and so forth. So that'll be tomorrow at 10 o'clock in my office or the conference room. We also, I am also going to ZBA meeting on Wednesday night, and that is in discussion with Mr. Williams. Dave McCray, I believe, was invited to that as well, and that is to try to put to rest the issue with Dunkin' Donuts. We've had three, two, actually, the initial building permit, which was all signed off on by all inspection services, they were issued occupancy permit way back when, and the two times after that. So I just wanted to talk to them and see what they can do, do you just approve the process, let it lie, put it to rest, and the building will stay, that's certainly my hope. So Tamika has put me on the agenda for that. Anyway, that's a go. We also have the school tours that we've talked about, they have two of them this week, Wednesday, the first one will be at 8:30 at Central Tree Middle, and the second will be at 9:30 at Naqog, and I know I've, I've mentioned this to the board before, and that's what we've done in the past, as far as the facility walkthrough, obviously to get to know the facility people, see if there's any issues they have on their mind, so I've invited certainly Joe Buckley, DPW, Public Safety, and all of inspection services, and I believe, Carol, you said you wanted to attend?
I just inquired.
So, okay. So that's, those are the meetings we have this week, and also one other, I'm sorry, I have one with the new administration of the school district, that will be on Thursday at 1 o'clock in the school district office, so that'll get us a chance to chat, to get to know each other, to meet, discuss, and just see where we are, and certainly I'll let them know where I believe we stand as far as the as far as the future goes. Hopefully it'll be a good conversation, and we'll get some stuff. Am I droning? I'm sorry. I feel like I am. I had some, a tooth. Anyway, we did have a department head meeting today, and again, so Karen, thank you for being here, as always. So we, again, discussed the budget, and they're all going to be getting to put their budget together effective August 1st. So between, I fully expect and hope that the budgets, as we see them, will be complete prior to the, before the end of summer. So between Tamika and myself, Karen, I've told the department heads that we will be meeting one-on-one with each department. I'd also like you to attend if you're available, and just go through so everybody knows what we're looking at, where we stand, obviously where we've been, and what our feelings are towards the future and what we're going to do. Thank you.
The finance committee has to meet with them.
The what?
It can't just be me, it has to be the finance committee that has to meet with them.
The whole finance committee has to be with them for the one-on-one?
That's part of, we have, well, we are required by law to meet with each one, to go over their needs, wants, desires, blah, blah, blah.
This early in the season, or later on?
Well, you're saying we're doing it now, so.
Well, I think, I think it's that initial meeting that then a former TA would come up with, then he's met with them, then this is what I think they should present, so I don't, I don't see that there would be, if you're available.
He's just inviting you to the initial meeting.
Oh, the initial meeting, because that's the thing, I was like, it has to be the phone.
Like their wish list, this isn't what's going to be presented to your board necessarily. This is what the departments are going to bring in.
Thank you for clanging it up, Mr. Nichols.
He comes in handy every once in a while.
Okay, so anyway, we'll be in touch about that. And Tamika, obviously you and I will, once things get on a roll, we'll set up those appointments. Okay, thank you. With the help of Tamika in my absence, she followed up on my messages to KP. So a couple of things to report on. One, first, and I know these came up at last meeting, was the cell tower. As I'm sure, I think you all know, that the board has no jurisdiction from preventing ZBA of the permit issuance. However, the abutters do have the right to appeal, but that's, that falls in their court. So that's all we have on that. The other thing, and Joe brought this up briefly, just mentioned the word, the street, anyway, Wachusett Road. So I did get a good response from, from Sharon, and Carol, I know you and I, I don't know that, if I talked to the whole board about it. However, there has been an offer for a contractor to go in there and complete the remainder of Wachusett Road following the footprint of Mr. Buckley and the DPW. So they have that ability. The board can certainly permit them to do that at their expense. Obviously, there's things that have to be put in place, there has to be, there has to be whole harmless agreements, there has to, we have to be sure of liability, property damage. The engine, Joe, you'd have to look at their plans. I believe the whole thing, as you and I have talked before, would be country drainage, so there would be no structures other than possibly the placement of a couple culvert pipes. Now, that being said, the board did vote to make that an unmaintained roadway, which it can remain that way. However, once they've completed the process of rebuilding, if you will, and it's inspected, and approved by the DPW, Mr. Buckley, then they can certainly bring that back for you to have another motion and to make that a town roadway. But that doesn't have to be done, it can remain an unmaintained roadway. I don't know if there's any questions about that, but that's.
Through the chair, so this is going to continue to be, this would continue to be a gravel road, they're not going to pave it?
That's correct, they'll just follow.
So we would be maintaining another gravel road that we're trying?
If, well, you'd be maintaining it if you make another motion and vote, obviously.
Right, if we allow them to, to complete the construction, then I believe then we're obligated to maintain that road.
Not if we leave the unmaintained.
I think, yeah, if I may, I think we could, I think it stays unmaintained until the board determines to reverse that. Whether we grant the contractor access to, to bring the road up to some level of continuity with the first half of the road or not, my assumption, I would think, and this is just my own personal thought process, is if we're granting a contractor the authorization to go in and do the work on the road, that then the hope or thinking would be that then the board would be amenable to reversing it from being an unmaintained town road. I don't know for sure, that's just all speculation on my part, but that would be, I think, the...
That would be my assumption as well, that this would be.
Right, I, I, I would think that that would be, we really would have a hard time to say it's, we wouldn't accept it if it's been rebuilt. I mean, how, the justification was is that it was not.
But I think it's the maintaining part, so.
Right.
It was two parts. In my mind, the original piece was to not continue to put money into, to bill, rebuild the, the roadway, and also then the ongoing expense of maintaining another gravel road. So that was, in my mind, the reason for the initial putting it on as unmaintained. Allowing, authorizing a contractor to go in and finish the rebuilding of the road takes off that one piece, but it would still be on the town then to maintain a gravel road.
Through the chair, so Gary, you talked to K P, the town council about this all?
Correct, that's correct.
Did they say what the responsibility would be? We don't have to accept it as a road stand?
You don't have to accept it as a maintained roadway after the fact? Only you also don't have to approve, well, once the contractor were to come in and present to you what their plans would be, it's up to you to prove that they do the work or not as well.
Joe, you had a question?
I just want to say, so it's still a town road, you just voted to not maintain it. But my understanding was to lift that not maintain limitation? Doesn't that have to be done at a town meeting? That can't be done by the board. Once that vote is, the vote is in place, that's my memory.
Well, what I got from legal, they did not mention town meeting at all, Joe, just going through the board.
No, but to make it, so in other words, along the, do you mind if I?
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you. Along the lines of what Leah suggested, that, I don't know necessar, once the board takes and makes the vote to no longer maintain it, it remains a town road, but it's not maintained by town, and that it has to be signed accordingly, and we did that. And then if the, if it were to be brought up to some standard, the decision to start maintaining it, I don't, I would ask that you please check with council, because I think that one actually has to be done at a town meeting and not by the board itself.
Through the chair, I, I would say if we abandoned it, it would have to go to the town meeting, but since maintaining it, I think the board has the right, and we can double-check the town council. If we decide not to maintain it, I would, I would not see why, any reason we could decide to maintain it. We made the decision not to, didn't go to town meeting. So I think the difference is between abandonment.
Yeah, that went to, as you know, that went to town meeting before, for the motion to abandon, but no action was taken.
Right, this is just maintenance, right.
But we can, I can certainly follow some more, but I at least wanted to give you the information I have at this point.
Tamika, we have a public hearing on this?
So it's not a public hearing, but it's going to be on the August 8th agenda that they plan to attend to.
So the engineer will be here on August 8th to talk about it. But I, I was myself curious about, I read the email from KP, but does it need to go to town meeting for anything?
Okay, okay.
I think that if we, if we had that answer, we'd probably, I'd be happier.
Okay, understood, we'll jump right on it, okay. Okay, where, where are we? So as you all know, and I'm sure the public are aware, that three of the major departmental contracts, union contracts, have been settled, that being police, fire, and DPW. And what we've done is stagger the three, so DPW has a one-year contract, police has a two-year, and fire has a three-year. So once that, for instance, Mr. Buckley's DPW contract is up, we'll go back on the three-year cycle. So it'll be a different union every year. The only one we have remaining is the sergeants' union, which I've talked to the chief today to get that rolling, get that out of the way. So anyway, I think that's good, I think it was successful negotiations, I think all, all meetings went rather smoothly, some back and forth, give and take. Obviously, the board approved all, so I was happy that it went as it did. So just to, just to give the board an update on that. I think that's all I have for you now, other than, obviously, we have ARPA discussions at a later time during a meeting, but that's all I have for you now, unless there's any questions.
I have a question. Gary, the sergeant contract is due for renegotiation, correct? So, and dispatch is next year, because I think we have a dispatch, but it's not included in the ones that we're discussing.
That's right, the dispatch should be, the later type, yes, correct.
Is not in this current, okay. I just wanted to make sure that, so it's the sergeant's one that's kind of outstanding or?
The sergeant's one, of the big, the big four, if you will, is the only one outstanding, and we will, that will be on the same, the same schedule, if you will, as the patrolman's contract.
Okay, thank you.
And when is that due?
Excuse me?
When is the sergeants' union one due? Was it due, was it due June 30th?
Yeah, it was due June, I'm sorry, it was due June 37th, patrolman's union, yes, so. And I did talk, obviously, as I said, Chief Bonico, we'll get started on that right away.
Conversation with Gary?
Can I ask a question? Who do you want to talk to?
So did they stick within the budget?
Did they stick within the budget? Well, it was all obviously given to the board the night that.
That doesn't answer my question.
Did they stick within the?
Don't dance around it, give me the straightie. We put in 2 percent. Did we get the 2 percent, or was it more?
They got the 2 percent, I think on year two of one, I don't have all the figures up, year two of one of them was 3 percent.
So year one, so.
Would be next fiscal.
Well, no, if it's, if it's year one, that means it's this year, we only budgeted the 2 percent. I have not a chance to read, there's quite a plethora of pages, I was kind of thinking that, you know, something, you know, we gave 2 percent for 2023 for the, for the unions. If anything's over that.
As far as the coal, no. But let me, let me touch rates with you tomorrow. Let me have them in front of me, that information, so I can, okay?
Great, thank you.
So nice of you.
You should have read them, so you'll be on top of that.
I'm not reading, that's what we pay you for. I'm a volunteer.
And now he knows the answer, or the questions he can have.
Aha!
Yes.
You got me.
Okay. All right, so we have a request for an appointment for Sandra Thomas to join the 300th Anniversary Committee.
So moved.
Second.
Any discussion? We need her, because she's doing the concerts, the next one's on Friday, so. Roll call?
Okay, Galvina.
Nichols eye?
Wait a minute, I wasn't there.
Benoit eye. Finally, shoot. All right, and Anita, election workers.
Yes, I think, you might have had one in your packet, but then I realized I had a couple of spelling errors, but, so I did an updated one. But basically, MGL requires that election workers be appointed between July 15th and August 15th, so that's why we don't do them in June, when you're doing all your other appointments. And prior, prior to this, we sent letters to the chairman of the Republican Town Committee and the Democratic Town Committee, because our election workers are supposed to be balanced as well as we can between the two major political parties. It's a little difficult to do that because so many of, you know, our workers are unenrolled, but we try the best we can. But that's why we sent letters to the chairman of both parties in, asking if they knew of anybody else that would be interested, and we didn't get any response. So this is, so what, what I gave you here is the list of those that, that have been working for us. In addition to, I think, one, one new person who's recently retired, so she's going to join the other two in her family and give it a try.
Through the chair, I just have one question. So is, was this a type of where it just says Briggs?
No, that's what, the new one has Ruth.
Oh, okay, I was just confused, because it sounded like the family or something like that.
Yeah, no. And, and I left off an L under, after Cindy Purcell, so.
Thank you.
I didn't, I thought it was just duplicate.
Now she gets me.
Well, I thought it was just duplicate, you know.
You're making a motion, Lyndon, or am I?
I'm not making a motion, because I'm going to recuse myself.
All right, I'll move. I'll make a motion to, I move that the slate, as presented by appointment elected officers of the town of Lawton, pursuing the MGL, Chapter 54, Section 12.
Second.
Roll call?
Okay.
Galvina, some keys?
Wait a minute.
Benoit eye. Thank you.
Thank you. If we are, our office, if we get close to an election, one of the things that, that the New Voters Act does say is that the town clerk can appoint within a week, or like if it's less than two weeks out before an election, if we find that, you know, we, we need more people, we can reach out and appoint other election workers.
And this is a little bit, I was wondering how, since we have such a large population of unenrolled voters, is there a way to, to better communicate to those unenrolled voters that we're always looking for, not always, but we're looking for election, like, work, officers, workers? Because I know, if it's going through the two major parties, I assume that there's distribution lists through those two major parties, but then the unenrolled voters kind of.
We've never really reached out, you know, or, or publicized that we were looking for voters. We do have people reach out to us, you know, every once in a while, and they're always happy to. We're actually, we've lost a couple of our college students recently, so if anyone knows, they're in college now, so they were in high school and they started working, you know, like during their junior, sophomore, junior, and senior year, once they're 16. So if anyone knows any high school kids that are interested, we're happy to, to have them also.
Okay, and then we have the September primary warrant, which needs to be signed.
Yes. It's, it's a little early, but I figured, since I was going to be here. Doesn't have to be posted until August 23rd, but.
Doesn't hurt, just don't lose it between now and then, because I would.
Oh, no, no.
If it doesn't need to be posted.
We have a special spot for warrants in our office, and we'll probably reach out to Dick earlier.
Can I have a motion?
Probably should make a motion.
A motion to sign the September warrant, primary warrant?
So removed.
Second.
Roll call?
Okay.
Nichols eye?
Wait a minute.
Benoit eye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Maybe I'll be retired one day and help.
Anytime.
Maybe.
That's all I take, I'm, I'm good.
All right, now we have a one-day liquor license for baked bakery for the, August 12th Food Truck Festival.
So if I may, I have questions about this, because I think historically, the food truck festival had been done as a fundraiser for the fire brigade, and the fire brigade had, not the, not the whole festival, but the fire brigade has been in charge of the alcohol portion of the food truck festival, so kind of everything went in under the, the fire brigade. Some of the things that had come, so I guess that's one question for the board, if, I think, I would imagine the fire brigade still wants to have the opportunity to do that as a fundraiser, I don't know for sure. Another question I had is, my understanding from reading all the MGL about questions that we had around the Fourth of July, was that in order to serve anything other than beer and wine, it needs, the vendor needs to be coming in under a nonprofit. So if we were to approve this, it would only be for beer and wine, and not the mixed drinks and everything. But I guess my bigger question is, I think there's been some conversation around the Fourth of July and the amount of liquor licenses that we had, and just, do we want to try to have it be a free-for-all, or do we want to provide it as an opportunity for some of our nonprofits in town that do a lot for the, for the different departments in town as a fundraiser piece? And so I kind of was under the impression that it would stay as a fundraiser, and this would be with the fire brigade, and that kind of, if the fire brigade comes in and wants the license, and they manage with whomever, how that works, but I don't know what the board's.
No, I was completely in agreement, because I, I don't know that we've, you know, we've not done. No, I was completely in agreement, because I, I don't know that we've, you know, we've not done individuals for this, and if it's, if the food truck festival is being hosted by somebody, I think that whomever's asking for a license should be approved as a, an approved vendor, and then they can come to us for the liquor license that they're looking for. Do you know, Tamika, who's hosting?
No, and I think that that's part of the challenge is, um, so I actually just got an, another application for a one-day liquor license from another vendor that would like to do it, and in trying to figure out, and talking to Leah, who is coordinating this effort, um, I've not been able to get an answer. So, I don't know, um, I have reached out to both chiefs, um, and, uh, Anita wasn't sure, last year Ron had kind of spearheaded it, so, it's kind of a gray area right now, um, so, so I could use some guidance as to how we're going to handle these moving forward, because I do have another one.
Yeah. I'm a leader, though, I always consider it for nonprofits to the fundraising type of, and I don't think, I'm not supportive of just opening bars all over town.
Because this applicant did pay a fee.
Through the chair, I'm just curious, I mean, what does the town make from this?
Nothing.
Nothing at all?
So, so if I may, so historically, years ago, there was the Chili Chowder Fest that was run by the fire brigade, and that was a fundraiser,
Right.
strictly for the fire brigade. That kind of went by the wayside for a whole host of reasons, and then, when Mike Nicholson was TA, he kind of was like, it would be fun to do something along those lines, but a little bit less work on individual restaurants or whatever, food trucks had made a big, come, you know, inroads, so, um, he kind of had started a food truck festival, um, and kind of, I think, originally spearheaded it himself, reaching out to not a, a, a number of food trucks, but not the whole consortium. Last year, I think Ron worked with the Worcester Food Truck Consortium, um, I don't know their official name, I think, um.
Yeah, it's like, I just looked up the name, like, the food truck, the food truck.
Yes, and so Ron pretty much ran it with that, and kind of went back and forth whether it was in his ballpark or Dave George's ballpark as the community plan, even planner. Um, but I think generally, it was the, the Worcester Food Truck Consortium, that's what I'm going to say, I don't know the official title of them, that kind of worked to get all the trucks in, and it was not on the town at all, um, they collected the fees, I don't think the town, I think it was basically like a fun thing for the town to do, get people out and about, and then also provide a, a opportunity for the nonprofit to raise, to raise some money in whatever deal they worked with, with the vendors that they had. Um, I think, is how it worked.
So, we've announced a, an August twentieth food truck festival, and we have, this isn't pointing fingers, but we have no idea what's happening, even if we're going to have food trucks, trucks there.
So, I don't.
Yeah, I, I can't.
Wow.
I can't find.
I don't know where it's even been publicized.
It is, so.
It's on all of Facebook.
Yeah, I've seen it on Facebook.
Facebook, yeah, there's a flyer out there, and they put it on a T A or B when I Googled, that's what I'm trying to figure out, and I can't find, I can't figure it out.
Oh, yeah, so who's? Who is they?
So, I can, I, I don't have with me the contact from the pre, but I can try to find the contact for the previous and send it to Tamika.
When I looked up old past emails, um, all the emails with Ron were with all internal people, other than the gentleman from the food truck thing. So, both chiefs were involved, um, Randy Jordan was involved, there were several other people involved, but this year, it seems that when I reached out to some of those folks, they are not involved. So, I'm just not sure who scheduled it, who's running it, because they came for their license, and now this other vendor is coming for their license, so, I didn't realize how it was done last year.
The food truck organization, that's a nonprofit organization?
I don't think so.
I was going to say, who's the nonprofit?
No.
All of this is profit.
No, no, the nonprofit would be the fire brigade.
Fire brigade for the beer.
Oh, the fire, oh, okay.
For the beer.
The nonprofit for alcohol.
Okay, just for alcohol, okay, but not the food trucks, okay, okay.
Right, 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 right.
So, Karen, I'm just going to put you on the spot for a second, because I was watching a meeting recently, where, um, your husband said, was talking about how we don't have the big, huge tent anymore, and he hasn't made any reference to.
Oh, no.
At home over dinner.
Um, I guess Seth, um, said he's already gotten the one-day liquor license for the twentieth.
That, I think that that was one of them.
He's already done it, so he's got it for Seven Saws and for Lilac Hedge for the fire brigade. We were talking about it.
Okay, so we have liquor, but maybe no food.
So, I think that that was in the.
Wow, sounds like fun.
Does that mean that we are then limiting and saying that unless they're sponsored by the fire brigade, no other liquor licenses are to be issued? Because then I would, I would just have to let these other vendors know.
I would think that's how, I mean, that's, I think.
That's the point, right, right.
Well, I think, I think that if, it's the point if an external vent, or an external organization is going to do it, I think that's our point. If somebody in town is going to do it, I think that we're looking at something different, um.
But isn't that what we charge the fee for, is if somebody wants to come in and do it, that that's why we have that in place? Or are we just going to limit the number?
Has there been a fee charged? They all paid the fee?
This particular person did pay the sixty-dollar fee, the ones through the fire brigade did not, so.
Through the chair, it's always my impression that we were only allowing liquor license for nonprofit organizations for that, we're not, we weren't opening up to allow bars to go all over town when anybody wants to just set up and start serving liquor.
Right, so that's how it came under the fire brigade, because the fire brigade is, they, they don't have liquor, so they, they get.
Right.
Right, no, I am, yeah, absolutely, yeah.
And even at the concerts, those were going to be contributing to the concerts, right, that was for nonprofit, no?
The three-hundredth.
I, I think.
No?
I think that some of the concert fees, or the, that, I think that, that, I do think that the vendors that came in under the fire brigade for the Fourth of July had a deal with the fire brigade to provide some income to the fire brigade, and I think that the vendor who comes in under the three-hundredth for the concerts does provide some, um,
Fundraising, like, donations to the three-hundredth, right.
Funds, fund back to the three hundred. I don't know to what, whether it's to the three hundred.
Right, but I thought they were all generating some kind of funding towards the event, that's why they were.
I don't, I'm not aware that, for the vendors that came in under the Fourth of July committee, for the Fourth of July, that any fundraising was done on behalf of the fundraising.
I think everybody in the Fourth of July pays anyway, I think they even get mon, they even get money for the pancake breakfast at the senior center.
They have to, I was told. I was told that if you have a food truck there for the Fourth of July, there's a certain percentage that had to go back to, of your, of your, had to go back to the Fourth of July.
Right, everybody pays a percentage to the Fourth of July. Right.
So, that's po, I don't know the specifics of the Fourth of July, you know.
Yeah, that's when I was under the impression.
Who enforces that? Hmm? Who enforces?
The Fourth of July, who sets it up, I mean, the committee that sets it up and allows the people to come, it's, it's, it's in agreement, like you say, they, they even get it from the senior center and stuff, expect a percentage of profits, so.
So, I guess I struggle a little bit with if, I guess, what, I can understand if outside food trucks are coming in through this outside organization, let's assume that that's what happens currently, just to take that argument out, that then, they may or may not want to serve alcohol, because they may or may not have the capacity to serve alcohol. If they want to serve alcohol, they would have to come to us for the one-day liquor licenses. I think before us is, do we want to allow that, or do we want to say, basically, if you're serving alcohol, it's under,
At the fire brigade, or whoever.
A nonprofit, like, a nonprofit, in this case, it's the fire brigade, with that license already issued, and, and I think they have two vendors already, I don't know if they would be amenable to having discussions with another, or whatever. I also know for sure that if vendors are coming in not under a nonprofit, they can only serve beer and wine.
That's good to know that.
See, I thought that, that, um, similar to like a craft fair and stuff like that, you, they paid for a spot, and that's where the town made some kind of money, that, that, there was like a registration fee that we would pay to have that spot
I'm not sure, I'm not sure if the town, I don't know the financial side of the town last year, when they, when Ron used the food, can, truck consortium people, if there was any portion that went back to the town or not. I just know that originally, Mike Nicholson had done it on his own, and I think the money went to the town, and then, it got to be that it was easier to have an outside, already established consortium do it, just logistics and everything, this is kind of one of the things that they do. They have all the food truck contacts, it's more legitimate on our side as going to vendors to say, hey, we actually want you, and also on the food truck side, that we know that we're getting legit food trucks. Um, I don't know if there was any financial agreement that the town would get a portion of that for essentially hosting them.
Well, that's crazy to me, because there's a lot of cleanup, there's, um, you know, police, and there's a lot of stuff that's expensive at the town, why are we not getting some coverage?
They cleaned up everything, they brought trash cans, they cleaned them up. Last year, they cleaned up everything, they were there, they set all the trucks up. Yes, the police and fire are there, Board of Health has to be there, they have to do all the inspections, yes, but other than that, this guy set everybody up, put up trash cans, empty trash cans, make sure they didn't overflow. It was very well handled, to be honest with you.
And I think that was part of the reason for going with an organization, like, an already established organization, was the setup and the logistics of the trash and everything were also kind of included. Again, I don't know what the financial piece of that was, that wasn't anything that I had any involvement on, I just know that it was done with the, the consortium, and that it was back and forth between who, you know, Ron or Dave George, and I think it was, I think it was Ron, but he was trying to get more, I don't know, I'm not sure.
I mean, it seems crazy, there's a date set, I mean, somebody's coordinating something.
So, so let's, let's step back a little, nothing has come through your office for permitting, for permission to use the field, to,
The field, yeah.
But, so nobody has heard any of this, there's, so there's this date of August twentieth, I'm going to say, we don't have one, I mean, nobody, nobody's here to talk about it. I don't even.
I think I'm very certain that permits, certain permits have gone through the Board of Health, because I did hear Lynn mention, um, that she's been, that they've been going through that for the food truck vendors.
Who, who is, so individual, so somebody, probably not a consortium, is spearheading this.
Yes, and I just don't know.
And just said, go ahead and call and get your permit and come that day.
So, yeah, did you, have you, and I know this all just kind of came about kind of late Friday, so, did you have a chance to reach out to the consortium gentleman or not yet?
I have not emailed him yet. I did give him contact information, because a potential vendor, I guess, was scammed on Facebook.
Okay.
So, I found this gentleman's contact information and gave it to her, because she wanted to speak to him, but I have not spoken to him yet.
So. So, I would try to reach out to him and see if, if he has it planned, because my understanding in the past was he kind of planned it, and I thought, I, and I don't, I don't know, I thought, at the time, there was, um, involvement with Karina for Recreation for Field Space and everything, to make sure that the fields were available, so I thought that all of that had been done at one point. I don't know if it was for this particular event, or if it was last, I, I, I don't know, but I would try to reach out to the, the consortium gentleman and see if, what he has, and then, we can try to piece it together from there.
Do I recall that this was on the three-hundredth, two-page, three-page? Because I'm wondering, it's, it's, it's a month earlier than it was last year, because it was in September, mid-September last year.
It was last year.
Right. Basically, so last year was.
It was last year.
And last year there was kickback, because it was too late in the fall for soccer and everything to basically block out the soccer fields, uh, in, um, September was a huge challenge.
But last year, I remember, it had come before the board, because there were several of the specialists, had with it, um, and so, this year, and I don't want to say that things haven't been done, because I certainly don't want to say that, but I'm just not aware, and haven't been able to find them, is all. And I know it hasn't come before the board yet, so I, I just don't.
It, it hasn't come to the TA's office, and it hasn't come to the board, which, then we have to say that it, it's not an event, it, that, that's, that's got anything to do with the town.
But my concern, and I, and this is why I want to suggest reaching out to the consortium, because if, if the consortium is planning it just based on old communication with Ron, and then has just continued to plan it and not needed.
Because I thought there was something to do with insurance too, that there had to do, something to do with the insurance policy, and who was going to carry that liability, and I think the fire brigade had had to get another insurance policy.
That's, that's, that's for the, for the beer, right.
It was a rider, not a.
Okay, that's, that's just for the beer, but I thought there was something else that had to do with it, so I wasn't so sure.
Yeah.
I, I love that range there.
Is, is somebody on Zoom that has something that they can add to our conversation about this?
Maybe look back through Ron's emails after last year's, because perhaps we could do this last year, and they're working on it from there.
And Tamika did go to.
Yeah, so, all right, so what, what I'd like to suggest is, holding on any liquor licenses. I will ask you to, to reach out, as, as Leah said, to the consortium, but I think somebody who, whomever's planning this on behalf of the town needs to come forward and start doing the processes. We have one more meeting, which I think is August eighth, that's the last meeting that we can sign anything, so people have two weeks to get it together and, and figure this out.
But I think, I mean, I, I agree, I think that it has been the TA's office in the past that has done it, so I think that's where I'm worried that there's the, the, one of those things with all the transition and everything, that if the consortium is, is, I don't know, if the consortium is planning it and just can, assuming that it's going on, because that's what was agreed upon, and they're doing the work, and they're.
But I just, I have vast, you know, that's, what is known now, and there hasn't, there hasn't been anything, so, it's not like it's going to like inbox everybody, you know, where the power, there's been.
Do you have access to Ron's inbox?
Yes.
Because I thought that possibly Ron was the one doing that communication, but I don't know for sure.
I think so.
I think I still have a copy of the flyer that came home from the three-hundredth, and, and that's what Joe was just saying.
My money is, it's one of those events.
I'm, I'm, I'm thinking it might be something that the three-hundredth has at least chosen a date, and I, I, I'm not in, not here to point figures, but I'm, we're not, we're not prepared to do, do, do this or any of the other ones, and, um, you could just tell Dolce that right now, everything's on, I mean. Which is not fair to vendors, because they've got to start getting orders in and whatnot, so.
And I think we also need to figure out, because we have already approved the one-day liquor licenses for the fire brigade for, um, Milk Room and Lilac Hedge to operate under them, so we need.
Seven Saws.
Sorry, yes, Seven Saws and Lilac Hedge to operate under them for that.
But Milk Room also has one, because they had come in under a blanket umbrella with the three-hundredth, and they got one-day liquor licenses for months worth of events.
But I'm not, I don't know if the twentieth was on, I don't know, this is why I need to go back.
I don't, right, I don't know that the twentieth, I know he has events through September, October, so he, he has them as well.
Right, 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 right. But I didn't think that, I didn't think that that was a twentieth, but I don't, I honestly.
I can confirm, because I will check.
I'm trying to find the Facebook post, I know it's on Facebook post.
We are not going to entertain one-day liquor licenses for anyone outside of what has already been approved for the fire brigade, is that, that's a fair statement?
Yes, and in, if this, if the truck, food truck festival happens, I think we're, I don't know if we need to take a, and who is it coming under?
Is it their own, they have their own page, right?
August twentieth, oh, yeah, August twentieth.
But that's, that's the whole page is them.
But the page is.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, so I think I remember trying to do that too.
Memorial Field, Brantland, August twentieth, twelve P M.
And I think that's what we have to be careful of, is if there's no.
Three thousand people interested.
Three thousand people interested, so we've got.
And a hundred and fifty-three confirmed going.
Probably I'm one of them. So, I think we're in agreement that any liquor licenses, as, uh, just to, to close up, but, well, what we've said about the liquor licenses, is that everything needs to come onto the fire brigade, and they've already requested a few, so, we need to refer them back, and if there's a way to get this back to Dolce.
Yeah.
Okay, and if we have to write a check to do it, whatever needs to happen, okay.
Carol, I am on, if you want to.
Hi, Randy, yes, please.
All right, so I just, I just got on, and I apologize for coming in late. Um, just as a, as a captain of the fire brigade, um, we had some concern, it initially started out as a fundraiser, when the town, or Mike started it, and then David George ran it, and the fire brigade put up a tent, and originally, we had asked, uh, Milk Room and Lilac Hedge and Seven Saws to join us, where they all had done a few things with, uh, the fire brigade in the beginning, and then, last year, or when it went afterwards, and it was kind of run by that third party, we assumed we'd do the same thing, and that's when Seven Saws and Lilac joined us again, as they had the previous year, and the fire brigade uses a, as a fundraiser, we kind of coordinate everything and make sure insurances and everything's in place to do that. We assumed everything would be the same, uh, this year, is, was our intentions, but it's really not our place to say what's right, what's wrong, and indifferent, because this other party is, is running it. Um, we're willing to work with others, but, um, I guess we, we, the fire brigade, really didn't know how to handle it either, um, with the third party in charge. Um, with the third party in charge either, they've never really communicated with us as a whole of what's going on. Uh, they just, uh, I assume we have spots and space ready to go, so, I, I think that's the short story of things.
Randy, you're talking about a third party, do you know who that third party is? I understand they haven't contacted you, but do we know who it is?
The third party, to the best of my knowledge, is like the food truck, uh, consortium, they said, but the gentleman that was in charge last year that came over and spoke to the Fire Brigade crew that was there was, I believe, don't hold me to this, it was a dog father. He had a black truck, he was a larger, bigger man, older, and I believe he was a dog father, he kind of controls, um, the market as a whole. I assume, assume that it's him, but I'm not a hundred percent certain.
Alright, thank you, thank you, Randy. Um, do you have, I, I don't know, I don't want you to speak on behalf of the brigade, but what we're trying to do is to get all liquor licenses to come under your umbrella, so that you will reap the benefit for the fundraising part. Um, are you, and would you consider entertaining anybody else to join, or do you have a cutoff, and maybe we'll just send them to you anyway, so that you could tell them? Because I don't think that we want to get into, I don't think we want to get in between, but, um, if you...
So, what we had done, what we had done in the original part of things is we had asked three vendors, not knowing really what we're doing. There's been a couple thousand people that have gone there in the past to do there, it's been fairly successful. In my opinion, it's similar to a farmer's market, that we really can't, if one person's selling a hamburger, we don't want to have somebody else sitting there selling a hamburger the same thing. Now, where Seven Saws and Lilac have worked in the past, they don't really overlap too much of the different types of beers that they sell. Uh, if someone wants to come sell wine or something that's outside the thing, I think we would consider it. The challenge is, I don't want the two vendors that come, that have been loyal to us from the beginning, to be spread too thin, or make it not worth their while to come. Um, that's not being selfish, because the other vendor, you know, if we get a buck of glass, um, as a fundraiser, it doesn't matter who we get it from, but you really want the people that want to come back to help you, so they can sell three glasses instead of two, you know what I'm saying?
Absolutely, absolutely.
So, I think, we, we certainly would entertain any, we don't have a Fire Brigade meeting until the first Wednesday of August, and we could discuss it as a group.
Alright.
We can have an executive committee meeting, uh, in between, but, uh, we're thankful and willing to work with anybody, so...
Okay. Um, Leah, you were saying about anything other than beer or wine, they could sell if it comes under a nonprofit?
Yeah, nonprofits, according to MGL, nonprofits are only ones that can sell like spirits, like hard, um...
So if Dolce went under
Fire Brigade?
Fire Brigade, they could sell cocktails?
I think so, yeah, I mean, that's, everybody at the fourth came under a nonprofit, so that's kind of how that works, so...
Right. Okay. So Randy, I was reiterating that, that we were talking about, um, from the fourth, because we had people selling cocktails, which we weren't sure. They didn't fall under the, um, the beer in malt or the beer in wine licenses, but it seems that we've had clarification, thank you to Leah, that if Dolce wanted to come in and sell cocktails, that would be different from what, um, who you have currently, so they might fit.
Who, who did, who did that particular vendor sell for the third of July under as a nonprofit? The three hundredth committee?
Yes.
Or, or, and fourth, no, fourth of July.
The four hundred. Fourth of July.
If I may, I just am looking at the Woo Trucks website, and they have August twentieth, twenty twenty-two listed as Rutland Food Truck Festival and Craft Fair on their website. So it is definitely through the Woo Trucks people, um...
It's a craft fair too?
Yeah, so I think he has coordinated in the past, having, last year there were some vendors there, um, I, I think so.
Craft beer.
Craft beer.
Reach out to, to Mark.
Well, they had the G F A, they had, um, Gibbs was there, they had, you know, the similar things that used to happen for the, um, Chatter Fest.
Right.
Challenge.
Okay, yeah.
Same things.
And like What You Make was there, and there were a few other like vendors that actually sell goods, but it, it is one hundred percent on their website, the Woo Trucks website, so, as an event, so I would definitely reach out to Mark.
I will do that tomorrow.
Okay.
Alright, well, we're investigators and detectives too. Um, so Randy, we're going to tell Dolce that we won't do a license for them, um, if they want to talk to you um, about the Fire Brigade?
Okay. Yep.
Okay. Alright.
Perfect, I appreciate that.
Sure.
Alright. On the first Wednesday in May, that's August, excuse me, August, the first Wednesday in August is August third, correct?
Yes, yes.
Okay, is that right, Randy? August third would be your meeting?
Yep.
Yes, that, that's our next meeting, yes.
Okay, I'll just not forget that.
And they can reach out, they can reach out to us, or there is a email on the website if they want to email us or ask a question, but
Okay.
Uh, any, uh, big, big can get in touch with, you know, any one of the Fire Brigade members, and they can get to myself, or Timmy Norwell is my top dog in regards to the, um, food truck festival.
Great, thanks, Randy.
Thank you very much.
It takes a town.
Thank you, everyone. Alright, um, number, item number seventy-two, discussion, hiring a recruitment firm to facilitate search for permanent town administrator.
So, if I may, I had just gone back through my notes, because previously, we had, um, worked with a firm to hire a, a, two different town administrators. So I went back to my notes to see kind of what that process, or my email, when we did that process with, um, when Margaret left and Nickle, and Mike Nicholson came on. Um, this is, I, I, I feel like there's tension here, this is by no means a slight to Gary. In my mind, an interim is someone to come in and, and do the work on the in-between, and this isn't, I'm not putting this as a slight to Gary at all. I think it's to, to town's benefit to have a full-time administrator hired to do a lot of pieces. And right now, Gary's doing that as an interim, and so I don't want this to be a slight against Gary. This is a process that I think should happen, as far as finding a full-time administrator, so I just want to put that out there.
Okay, okay.
Because I feel like there's, there's tension that I'm upset with Gary or, or whatever, and that's not, to me, it's that this is, we need to have a...
I have not heard that.
Okay, okay, I just want to, I just, okay, I just want to put it out there.
I know.
Skip told me that, Skip, you did tell me that.
Skip likes to stir the pot a little bit, so I just want to put it out there, that Gary, it's not a slight to you at all.
Okay, no, understood, no, I hear, I hear you.
And so, we had, um, interviewed a few different search firms, um, at the time, this was when Margaret left, and we were working to find a permanent town administrator, um, permanent full-time town administrator. So we had interviewed a few search firms, um, there were three that we had interviewed at the time, and then from those three, we, they were about half-hour interviews. They kind of gave us a little presentation, what their process would be, we had about a half-hour each with them, fifteen minutes of question or discussion. And then we chose a firm as a board to work with, to do, basically, at that time, they did everything for us. We said, we want you to do everything, the, the pre-screening, the, the reaching out to references and everything, and we want you to bring before us as a board, three to four qualified candidates. And then the board interviews in open session and makes a decision of that pool that they present to us through their vetting process. Um, there's pros to using a firm, there's cons, the con is it costs money. We had appropriate, we had approved ten thousand dollars of ARPA funds to, um, work with a firm, up to ten thousand dollars. Um, and the ballpark seems to be in the, depending on what level of service, between five and ten thousand dollars seems to be the, the amount. Um, we, the, the entire process, it's an entirety. Um, the, the pro, one of the big pros is these search firms have a large pool of candidates. Um, more and more, uh, qualified TAs prefer to work with firms, because they know that the towns are committed to that, that process, and then they have the vetting process as well. Um, they also know, the firms also know a lot of the players they've worked with, they, they know the, the town administrator landscape. Um, and they know what town administrators may or may not work for, for a specific town, as they, as they meet with us and get to know us. It's not just, they conduct interviews of stakeholders, to get it, the firms conduct interviews with stakeholders, to get a sense as to what the town is like, what the town is looking for, and, and that kind of work, so it's not an arbitrary, like, we're picking these people because they've been pestering us, like. Um, so the, the process, it's an entirety, I think it took about four months in total, from the time we started interviewing, the board started interviewing the firms, um, until we had, uh, I think that process started about the middle of September at the time, and then, um, we, Mike Nicholson started the middle of January. So from kind of the very start of talking with the firms, to onboarding is, um, is about four months. So it seems like now, the, the goal of the firms is still kind of to bring candidates before the board in the sixty to ninety day frame, timeframe. Um, and then it's obviously contract negotiation, which is generally on the board, um, to do with, with the selected candidate, and then negotiating, and that includes negotiating start date based on their previous pri, current employment and everything. So that's just kind of the overview, um, so I was hoping that we could have a discussion as far as the board approved up to the ten thousand dollars for ARPA funding, um, and to possibly, uh, agree to begin interviewing, uh, look at a time to interview search firms, if that's the route that the board chooses to go with, given that the money is already approved. I think that that is, but I don't think that we've ever taken a formal vote, that we definitely are going to go a search firm, other than appropriating or approving the ARPA funding, and then how we would select that firm, um, but have the firms come in to talk to us, to give us a presentation, an overview or whatever.
Is that a definite number, five to ten thousand dollars?
So it's...
I mean, I, what's a firm going to charge? I mean, is that a definite number, not a number that somebody grabbed out of the sky?
So I've reached out to a couple to get a ballpark, and obviously, it depends on, on the negotiation piece, but the five to ten thousand seems to be the numbers that are, are floated around. Five is a lot less involvement from the firm, and more involvement on the town side, and the ten kind of seems to be essentially what we had done with, um, when we worked to, to bring Mike Nicholson in, that we basically said, go, and then bring, you know, develop, work with us to develop our community profile, and then bring us the top three to five candidates that you think would be legitimate candidates for us, and we as a board then interview them and make that selection. Um, and they do the background checks and, and backgrounds references and everything, so that's kind of the pros to, to some of that. So, um, obviously, I think it would depend on what firm we went with and, and everything, what the final, final number is. Um, but I just wanted to, to put it out there, that's...
Leah, you and I had a, a conversation, I don't know whether I blanked the conversation, or whether we got interrupted, which more likely we got interrupted, because we usually do. Um, you had said that you were looking up why TAs are so mobile, do you, I, I don't remember the cause.
So, there's a whole lot of different reasons, um, it seems currently, recently, and this is just kind of anecdotally, I don't have any, you know, um, it's really changes in boards, and...
That's it, we did have that conversation.
And, so I think that that's something that we, as a board, and, and not just us here, but looking forward, is that we need to be mindful of, um, that that's, that's an oper, a possibility, I mean, and so a lot of them are fulfilling, fulfilling their, their contract, but then not being, their contract is not being renewed, because there's been a change in the board, or on, on either side, you know, the board doesn't want to renew, or the, the TA doesn't want to, to renew with the current board. So, um, that seems to be kind of the big thing. Um, the other thi, I mean, for Rutland, um, and the firms can probably speak a little bit better to, to this, just with their, their experience, but given the size of Rutland, we're still kind of young in, in the history of having a TA, but we have a lot of balls in the air, and, and, and have that, that need for a TA, so it's not, but we can't pay a large amount that some of the other communities, even our size or smaller, can pay. So we have to balance that, um, so some of it is Rutland can sometimes be a stepping stone, this, I mean, we've, because we don't have that, that salary that we can attract someone that's looking for a more stable, um, um, position. So either they're a stepping stone for someone looking towards kind of retirement and, and towards the end of a career, or the start of a career and looking to, to make a jump in a, in a few years, to get some experience and make a jump. The mid-career people may be looking to go for another town administrator, but then jump to a town manager or something. Um, again, I think the firms could speak a little bit more succinctly to that, but generally, that's kind of what plagues us in everything.
So I think we had our first TA in twenty fifteen, um, Margaret, I think that was her start year.
I don't remember off the top of my head.
So that's, that's been seven years, and if I've counted correctly, we've had three full, three permanent TAs, and two to three interim TAs in seven years, so that's five to six people, so we've had no continuity. Um, I'm concerned, now that you reminded me about a board sometime driving the, the in and out, that on, in May, we have two positions that are gonna go, is the timing off, should we wait until we seat a board for that, because you're gonna, it, it's possible, because there's two up, that we could lose three-fifths of our board.
And, I mean, yes, but then you can look at it next year, that there's two off, two up next year. And so I feel like we can always find a reason, and I would argue that if there's people that are looking to potentially run in May, I don't know what the, if, I, I don't, that they may have, would hopefully at least take some interest in, in watching the interviews, and, and seeing, and seeing that process, so that they have a, um, they know what they're coming into. I mean, I think that, I, I don't disagree that that's a, a possibility, and also, next year, there's two off, two up. So I think the nature of the board is every year, it's, it's two-two-one, so it's really, and I think it's just the board needs to be mindful of, it really needs to be a team effort, and working, um, as a team to drive the, the betterment of the town, and not a single-person agenda.
I, I think with a position like that, like you said earlier, money's all, money talks, it always will, no matter what, if we can't, someone's always gonna move on to better themselves. So we can't think of hiring someone based on what if. You just try and hire the best candidate, and hope we hang on to him or her as long as we possibly can. Until we have the money to pay them top dollar, we can't change that, you know, so, uh...
So Carol, do you remember the date that Ron goes off the books?
So currently, um, yes, so just as a refresher to anybody that's listening or in the room, Ron is on the books until September thirtieth. Um, and I figured that that's probably about, well, it's, it's thirty-four thousand dollars plus, um, fringe, and health and all of that, which until June thirtieth, we were able to take ARPA money for, but right now, we're in a, God knows we're get, we're, we're writing a check, and we don't know where it's coming from, Karen. To the best of my knowledge, um, and I would love to say, I'd love to think that we could have a little bit of time to make up that, and, um, I mean, I have my own personal thoughts, and I don't know how to, I don't know how to move from here, um...
So I guess, I mean, I was trying, if I may, I was trying to be mindful of knowing that until September thirtieth, we have a double TA. And so hiring a firm now, or let's say we would hire them in middle of August, at the earliest at this point, right? I mean, it realistically may not be until September, then that money is already... Then that money is already approved, that funding for that person, that firm is already approved, so we wouldn't be looking to pay. The the onboarded town administrator until whatever that start date is, which would potentially be. Most likely three to five months out, I mean, I mean. And just knowing what the field is like right now as far as the number of town administrator openings and everything, um, I would think that it. Would realistically be four to five months and not, um, and I think that there's, um. Again, not a slight to to Gary, but there's benefits to having a full-time. Town administrator that has that that has some experience on the town administrator side, but also the full-time hours that can. That can commit to to some of the things, um, just.
Well, I mean, that that was my feeling when we hired the last town administrator is bringing somebody on with experience was gonna be a benefit. I I I personally, I I like to close things officially, so I I don't wanna, I don't like to start another process till one ends, like bringing. The TA, bringing Ron, when Ron goes off the books and bringing another one on, I like the idea of having a buffer where we're only paying a part-time person because. We're gonna wanna transition peri- period where we can build up a little money and we can continue to have Gary on while someone else comes on. So that they can work closely together and we can still afford to to pay both of them. Um, I I I'm a little gun shy because I I I wanna take it very slow and be very specific because. Um, I I I don't think we've gotten it right a lot in the past and I I wanna make sure that this is done correctly and I and I know it's difficult to attract people. And in the type of salaries that we're looking, the other piece there is, is that I, there there's an HR issue, I I think, and I think. There's an opportunity where we could probably, cause we, right now, we only have a part assistants, a part assistant at the town administrator's. Um, office and I'd like to build so much more of a, more of an assistant type position, a higher position that could help handle some of the HR issues. That have never truly been addressed in the town that, um, that need a lot of work, so I think there's a lot of benefits of. Of how we do this as far as cost to the town and and doing it in in a, in a, a slow transition that's. You know, more efficient and and like I said. Uh, I I I'm more concerned about, I really am gonna have to look deeply into it before we make a final decision because. I know the process of this firm did exactly what the committee did. And they went through all these applications and they brought us three applicants that I thought were vetted and and everybody had looked. Deeply into their past and had, um, check references and whatever, and these were the best candidates out of the twenty-two people that applied. That were brought to us and I had confidence in that committee bringing that, just as I would guess I would have confidence in the committee, but I I won't necessarily have that without. Doing more research myself prior to make any decisions on selecting a a town administrator going in the future, so. Um, like I said, there's definitely some benefits of playing with the money a little bit. Um, and 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 right now, Gary's done a great job in in correcting a lot of issues we had that we we weren't even aware of. Um, that that he's still, you know, in the in the deeps of, you know, a lot of things that need to be corrected and. We, you know, he did a great job getting the contracts done because that was a disaster and that was going nowhere and, you know, he did a great job in being able to get those closed out because. You know, our departments weren't happy with the way things were going and it seems like everybody is on the same page now and and those are being resolved, so. But there's definitely a a benefit in doing it, slow rolling it and do it correctly and and looking at what our options are as far as. Getting the support we need in in the in the town administrator's office, so.
I mean, I guess, I I don't disagree that we don't wanna rush things, I I fully agree with that and I'm also looking at it as far as. This is not a, the process itself is not a quick process, so I would rather. Start the process and know that we're still going to be out potentially six months. Potentially because we're, I, it's, we're not likely going to have the interview scheduled for our next meeting, so that would be. Into the middle of August and then if vacations or whatever, I think. You, to even hire a firm, so we're potentially five to six months out already and I would rather. Be able to take our time with the firm also and say, and maybe they end up needing more time to bring, to find candidates. Or they bring us candidates and this is a conversation we can have with the firms, what if you bring us candidates and and we're not. We're not happy with the candidates, then what happens, you know, what what does that look like, um, you, so.
I agree with you, Leah, I I think dragging our feet too much is a mistake.
I think the transparent, in my mind. The trans, having a firm, putting more control in a firm provides. Almost more transparency to the public because we're not getting any additional information, nobody on the board is getting any more additional information. Than what they see in open session and it's not driven by one or two people or whatever, that what they may want or whatever. Um, it's really the firm interviews stakeholders, they, in the past, they had interviewed all the select board members, they talked to staff. Um, and had opportunities for the public to provide feedback also to them as far as what's important and everything in a in a town administrator. They took that, put it together as a package to kinda sell Rutland to candidates as well as they're then selling the candidates to Rutland to find that match. So in my mind, with the firm, because and since. The money is already be, it was recommended by the ARPA committee and approved by the board, that the money is there, in my mind, that's a more. Transparent process to the public because it's essentially happening exactly what we know is what's happening with with candidates.
I guess for me, it's not, I, if, it's not a a matter of whether we would go with with the firm or try to do it ourselves, cause I think that we should go with the firm. Um, we've, we've been more successful going with a firm than not going with a firm. Everybody still stays for about a year and a half and and leaves, but, um, I guess right now, I'm thinking. Um, you know, similarly, we're, we've seemed to, I I think that we've kind of gotten into a groove. I feel comfortable with the way things are going, I feel that the office has been transparent with the board. Um, so I, I'm wondering if Gary wanted to apply for this position. Full-time, whatever that looks like, would he, would would we entertain that as a board? Knowing that it's not gonna be forever, but if we, cause we, right now, our contract with him is either party can. Say goodbye with fifteen days notice and we wrote that in because of how much we needed to expend. To to finish a contract before, um. So I guess I'm wondering if if that's something that we would entertain as a board, I don't know Gary's thoughts on it, um. And I know this is uncomfortable for him, he's to to be listening to this, um. But, or do we, or or is the board wanting to just jump into, you know, in another month. Con, having firms come in and we're we're interviewing them for decision and all that stuff, I I think that's the end. Do we wanna ask Gary if he wants to have the position for longer than fifteen days from now? Um, or are we looking for to to be done with that, I guess, I. To put it bluntly, I guess.
I think whoever wants the position full-time should apply for the position, go through the process, I mean. I I don't see the point in just continually dragging this on longer and longer, I don't see that helps us moving forward.
But if we, if if Gary was interested in the position for the next two years. When we could potentially hire somebody and be then hiring somebody else again within just ours, as our timeline record has been. We could be looking at possibly.
Right, I think it's dangerous to think what ifs though, I I mean, Margaret was a good candidate, she just moved on to bigger.
No, wait a minute, wait a minute, wait a minute, I gotta defend the lady, she left because of. Certain people on the board drove her right out of, right out of that office. And there was no way that I could talk to her or anybody could talk to the persons plur- plural. That were driving her out here.
Well, I wasn't on the board then, I don't know the internal.
I guess, I guess I'm not sure about the, everybody keeps saying we don't wanna drag our feet on this and I and I think we're progressing and we're making a lot of progress. So I I I don't feel that we're dragging our feet on the, and getting this done because we're actively addressing things that need to be addressed in town.
That we're making progress in town.
Yeah, I think we, yeah, absolutely.
I also think that. We, uh, if we're even going to entertain hiring Gary, then we need to post the position and and then that essentially turns into. Us doing the recruitment ourselves and that gets messy based on history. And so I would say having.
We're promoting within, you don't have to post it.
You still have to post.
I know.
So I have a question, are you prepared to meet twice a week, every week for four months? As well as doing your thirty hours a week in the office, as well as attending a a select board meeting? Cause that's what a town administrator has to do during the budget season.
Poor Gary was not, doesn't even know.
I know, but I'm asking these questions because that's the concern I have is, as a volunteer board, we were doing a lot last year. And we didn't have people to go back on and I can't always give that kinda time. I do have a full-time job that pays my mortgage and my taxes, so I would, I I. If Gary wants to go for it, Gary go for it with the firm, but we need a full-time town administrator here who can look at things. And ask the questions and handle all these things, and Gary's doing a great job, but.
Gary or any other town administrator, that would have to be spelt out in the contract, the expectations.
And I'm in agreement, and I'm in agreement, but that's the thing, cause last year we were kinda stuck on our own as a finance committee. And it was difficult.
And I will say, Margaret finished her her term, she she finished her contract, it was a three-year contract, she finished her contract.
And she had agreed to renew it.
Right.
Okay, so, so, don't make it sound like she left.
No, 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 I, I know, I, I, and I was just elected on at that point, so I am not privy to all, I mean.
Yeah, I wasn't aware of the dirty details either, I I was under the assumption she moved, went to Berlin or something for.
So.
She took a clerk position.
Oh, did she, okay, well.
But I just wanted to, right, so I.
There's plenty of history and everything.
Yeah, I mean, there's always gonna be that, but.
But I think that we. I feel like having this conversation now is not rushing things, it's providing plenty of leeway because we know in realis- in. Reality, it's gonna be a month or or longer until we have a firm onboard and then it's going to be. Two to four months until we have a, you, four months from that point, three months from that point until. The candidate's on, I think most firms are ideally pushing the sixty to ninety days to bring candidates before the board. And then it's the interview and the contract negotiation, so that still would put us into January, um. Rough, you know, it would be a similar timeline to what we had been working with before.
And, you know, here we are starting the budget process now and then we're gonna bring a brand-new person in in January that won't be. I mean, that that I wanna be able to make sure we have a transition and that if it, you know, if Gary. Would stay on and and mentor and work with that person for a period of time, I wanna make sure there's enough money. To play with, that we can actually make sure that we can afford to have somebody, so it's a smooth transition because. That individual isn't gonna meet with anybody regarding budgets or anything else prior to being hired, so they're gonna have to catch up on everything going on in the town.
And we always are going to have that, no matter when, when we choose to do it.
But we could have somebody we could afford to keep mentoring because we're, we're not paying him full-time currently and once this other one goes off the books. We we will have some play as to what we can do as far as transitioning people. Cause the money, that's salary line is still in there.
We need a full-time position, we need a full-time person. I I I, me and Leah just went to a training, a select board training, they brought up grants, grants for this year are already closed off. This town is going to need a lot of help from grants, if we don't get somebody. Who is at least, you know, steering the ship in into this process, we are gonna miss out on grants next year.
Well, we've also talked about having a grant writer that make, writes a grant.
Absolutely, absolutely, very important, very important, this town's gonna need that, we're gonna need help. And regardless of who you're voting for, what your political, this administration is is giving grants out, they're giving grant. We need somebody that's gonna help us get some of that grant money.
And they're grants that wanna show the investment on the town side, so this is getting off the con, off the, you know, the full-time, but it's. They wanna see monetary investments on the town side, whether that's engineering work done or feasibility studies done or whatever that. The projects are ready to go and not just, well, we have this project, but we have done nothing other than say we want it and wrote this grant then. Um, so there's, but there is a lot. There's a lot of pieces, I think, that Gary has been carrying and that's great and there's a lot more pieces that. Given the the amount of time that it takes with a full-time, I mean, the full-time contract was basically, it's a forty-plus hour job. And these are the expectations and whatever and and. I think both Margaret and Mike were here way more than forty hours a week doing, doing the work and and. Knowing where to get the pieces and everything and not the, and Gary's quite capable of doing a lot of it, but we also are mindful of Gary's hours and still trying. He's doing way more than he's contracted for as it is and we're still trying to be mindful of that, so. I'm not, like I said, I'm not viewing this as we're pushing Gary out the door.
So I don't make a motion, we've been on this thing for about forty-five minutes now, make some sort of motion or say something definite. So either move forward or we hold, one or the other.
Well, and I'm just trying to have a conversation to figure out what the consensus is because.
Forty-five minutes, you're saying the same thing over and over and over. I know it's important, so we're gonna make a decision either one way or the other, there's no, you know, and if then what's about it. If you wanna start something as getting a firm in here, make a motion that in two weeks we get a. Pick a firm, a name of a firm that you come up with, do three or four names or have them come in in three or four weeks and. Let's start the ball rolling instead of this up and down, up and down, saying the same thing.
Then I guess, I mean, I would make a motion then if that's what, I I, and but I don't know how the rest of the board is, this is the, I would make a motion. That the board move forward researching, um, firms to come in and interview within the next. And I hate to put a date on it just because of availability and it's generally, I think it was done outside of a regular meeting because. It was an hour and a, two hours of time essentially, um, but by Janu- uh, but by September, we are looking to interview firms.
Second.
Any discussion? And we'll call vote?
Clap nay.
Galvin aye.
Uh, Nichols nay.
White man aye.
I'm not ready to do it, so I'm gonna say nay, I think that we, I think we can have, as a board, I think we can have a. A bigger discussion about the whole town, I I've got some ideas that I'd like to.
And so I guess my struggle is I was trying to use this time to have that as a discussion to get a consensus and I was just told to not have that discussion and to put this. So.
I didn't, that's not what I said, we're gonna, we could have, you can, we've sat here all night long, that this thing back and forth, it's been forty-five minutes.
So nobody, but nobody wants to have the discussion as to what the plan is moving forward and so.
I don't want, I, I gotta agree with Linda, we don't have funds at this moment in time, so we. And if Gary's willing to stay on until December, January, you know.
But that's essentially what this would have been, is Gary staying on until December, January, potentially even February, at 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 the late, at the earliest. Because till you hire a firm and then get, which we already have the money to hire the firm. That's already been approved, that was ARPA funding that we voted on, that was recommended from the ARPA committee. So there's a consensus from the ARPA committee that this is an important thing and then we as a board approved that that funding. So that would be for the firm, but then we wouldn't be hiring anyone until January, February timeline anyway. So that's what I'm looking at is at this point now, we're gonna hit January, February, may- maybe Gary wants to be like, I'm done with you guys and we have nobody.
I I I mean, I agree that we should look, I I wanna research more on the firms and and get references and see that they're reputable firms and which is the best one because it. I don't, the one thing I don't wanna do is to get involved in a firm and just sit and they interview us and and all of a sudden we pick them, it's kinda where we were with the town administrator. So I would like to find out more information about potential firms and what we're doing, but I'm not ready to to pick a date and say, okay, we're gonna start interviewing with them and stuff. So I I wanna get more information on.
And I have.
The vote was to start.
To, to.
To looking for firms.
No, to start interviewing and hiring.
Right, but leading up to that, then I have the list of the three firms that we had contacted before, which I had sent to the chair and. The town administrator and everything and then there are other ones if anybody had interest, so that was, it's not like I've been doing this in a bubble. And these were reputable firms that.
What I would like us to do is to do some prep work ahead of time. As a board, what are we looking at? We've, we've got maybe some, we, I think we may have an opportunity to rethink. An HR person, can an HR person take, cause I, I, I heard in budget meetings that HR. That, that Becky's doing HR things that should not be being done by a, a treasure collector. So is there space for that, that could maybe be? I was looking at, cause I've been looking at websites to revamp ours. Um, I think the town of Webster and forgot who else said, some, somebody said that there's an assistant TA. So that you've got maybe people with different strengths, rather than having a TA that we hope will have all of the strengths. Do you have a TA that has a lot of strengths but is complemented with an assistant TA? And there are towns out there that have that model. And I'd like, I don't know how to ever do these things, cause I would love to just sit down and have a conversation. And, but everything has to be an open, open meeting and so it, it takes like almost contention to get to these parts. But, um, I'd like to see if there's, is there a way that.
Is that something we can have executive session?
We don't need to have it in an executive session, we, because it's not contract, it's not personnel, it's, it doesn't fit an executive session.
And that was kinda what I was talking about, having somebody like at a higher level in the TA's office. And I, and there's a lot of very small communities, smaller than us out in Western Mass, that have assistant, um, town administrators. That take more on for like HR and could be do grant writing and stuff like that. So I mean, I, I, that, that was the other thing I wanted us to look at is, is the structure, is the structure the best for us? Or, or would we want to try to expand that structure in some way? To get more opportunities for somebody to specifically deal with the HR issues or to do grant writing, et cetera.
When you say an assistant town administrator, assistant to who?
The, to the town administrator.
So assistant to Gary?
Well, whoever the town administrator ends up being regardless.
We would want to know that before we start talking to, to firms.
And I would argue a little bit that having a town administrator in there, knowing, working. This would be a conversation with the firm, that we would potentially want to see how we would get to an assist, a, a, a full-time town administrator. And an assistant town administrator. And then that town administrator could help us with that also, because it's a lot for a five-member board that probably doesn't agree on everything. To try to manage that in addition to this. And so, again, that's another huge funding piece, because assistant town administrators are not. Not an inexpensive option.
I mean, I have no idea, because I've not looked at, I'd like to look at job description, like salaries, I'd like to look at a, a number of things. In thinking that, because we do need somebody with more HR, even the last person didn't have strong HR. So, you know, can you, can you pull out some of that and, and have that be part of a?
One of the conversations with the firm is that we really are lacking in HR. So we need a town administrator that has strong HR and can still do whatever. And that's up to individual conversations with the firm as well as, as a board. And they talked, like I said, the firm in the past has talked with employees to get the employee senses to like what. What are the big needs for employees on, on their side of things, as well as for the boards and, and residents? And so I feel, I, I'm, I'm just frustrated. Because I feel like this is just continuing to kick the can down the road, whenever we try to have conversation, it doesn't go anywhere. Cause everybody just wants to have more time to have a conversation and so that's, that's my frustration.
So you say we, we always do that, so what are other examples where we've just kicked it on?
No, I just said, I feel like for this has been a case where.
But we haven't had an issue like this before.
Not, not right, no, right.
Right, so and, and like you say, we, we, we're just dragging our feet, but we don't wanna drag our feet, we wanna, we wanna do it slowly and correctly. So I don't feel that it's like just kicking the can down the road, I think it's, we need to make sure we all are on the same page. And what's gonna be best for the town in that office? What's the structure gonna be, what's the best person, what's the best way to get them? Um, and that's my concern and we still have two people on the books right now. And I know it takes time to do it, but also it takes time to do a transition.
So Gary, when is your time officially, officially up?
Fifteen days.
Fifteen, oh, it's fifteen days?
At, at any time, it's, it's, it's an open contract, it's, either, either parties can discontinue the contract with a fifteen-day notice. And we might get one tomorrow after this conversation.
Or fourteen, before midnight, it could be fourteen.
I guess I'll just put out there that I, I'm, I'm a bit, bit gun-shy when it, things feel like they've been getting better. And into like change that trajectory right now, I'm, I'm hesitant. That's where I'm coming from, um, if the board had been all for, I would have as, as well been for. But I am just. Anyway. It's not over, it's, it's over for today, it's on the agenda, we didn't table it, but it's not over. Um, and we have one more agenda item. Um, an ARPA fund update, which I had asked Gary if he would please provide us. Um, through Becky gave us, um, all the balances and where the bottom line is with what we've got. I think that we got some of the August money in already.
Do you have, do you have a report, um, did Becky give you the report with the latest spreadsheet? Everybody's got it? Oh, okay, I did not know that, so I printed.
No, I asked Becky to put it into the packet, so.
Okay, so I don't know what you're looking, I, I highlighted mine, so, okay, I guess it's the same sheet. So, um, if you look up top, up top to the far right, you'll see that. Obviously, well, estimated cost was the amount that was approved and up to the far right, spent to date. Um, item one, obviously there'll be, um, recurring monthly payment. And we'll see where we are when that, um, when that, the balance of that amount of one ninety. And what we have to do is, as far as to extend that or expand that or re-budget that. Item two is completed, but I, I want everybody to understand, I have, I do have to meet with Becky and Gene when Becky comes back next week. That we do have to make sure that these are final figures, but item two is complete. Item three is the nursing staff, according to Lynn Miller, we will still need some of that money. So out of that fifty, you've spent seventeen thousand and we, we will need some more additional money. For whatever may or may not happen with COVID in the next, next fiscal. And that was the conversation I would limit today, so we don't have a final figure. The next one is complete for the senior center, the next one of the five hundred and sixty-three is all they've spent. And Lynn Miller believes that's all they will spend, because the rest was, um, through grants or the CARES Act. So she is double-checking on those figures. The next one is the, um, overtime figures, which is just a, um, just the police side. Joe, I don't know if it was police or fireside. But anyway, we, we need the balance of that, which was already, um, allocated for and for that full amount of thirty-five thousand dollars. So I just don't have the, the exact final figure.
Oh, it's emergency services.
Excuse me?
It's coverage, cause people, for all those three public safety.
Right, the seventy-five thousand that we're, we're obviously talking to Gene about, um, for the fuel, for the fuel assistant. Obviously, there's no nice deficit you're fully aware of, um, those things on the top part. Um, to give you the dollar figures and as we have stated before to the board. Some of these obviously will be under budgeted as far as this, this number goes. And will be put back into the ARPA balance for use elsewhere. Obviously, the summer help, as Joe said, is already taken care of. We do have the, excuse, oh, I'm sorry, somebody ask a question? No, okay. The next one, a hundred and sixty-seven thousand, that's already approved by the board and that's another item that I wanna talk to you about later on. But the remainder of this on section two of this page is all items that we are all actively working on. To make sure that we come up to snuff with all these dollar figures and amounts and operations and procedures that have to be taken care of. The other is, obviously you'll see at the bottom, six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. So to try to explain it briefly, I don't know if you all have that spreadsheet as well. But perhaps in haste, perhaps in error on my part, when we first approached the board. With the stipends or bonuses, if you will, out of the ARPA money for all those who worked during the state of emergency. We realized after the fact, after distribution, that was, um, a, a little bit, um. Not proper in how we came out with our final discussion. So the decision was brought forth to the ARPA committee and they voted on it unanimously to come back to you. To up the amount for police to, um, from three thousand to thirty-five hundred dollars. So the second, if you have that next sheet, I don't know if you do, it shows that dollar figure of six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. That I will be looking for, we, the committee I should say, will be looking for to redistribute it to police. Uh, full-timers and part-timers, part-timers, obviously, their percentage will be upped from a percentage, um, based on hours worked. Of the, the three thousand to the thirty-five hundred, which will up their, up their, their bonus a bit. So anyway, the full amount with the full staff over there comes to six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars. So, um, the ARPA committee approved that today, so I am bringing that forth to the board now for their motion and approval.
If, if I may, sorry, do you, um, so taking this amount into account. The funds available not allocated to projects that, um, one, one million, one hundred thirty-two thousand, four hundred thirty-six dollars and eighty cents. That includes taking this sixty-nine fifty out also?
That's correct, but there's two other items, two or three other items that I'm, I'm also decided by the board, by the ARPA committee, I should say. To bring forth to the board tonight for their approval. After I bring those, once you, once you decide on the six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars for the additional bonus. The grand total down below, you'll see in the bottom is one point three, no, one point one three zero and change. Once I request the additional two items, that will bring that dollar figure of, um, left in the balance. Before we adjust, before we get the final figures for the upper section to roughly nine hundred and seventy-five thousand dollars.
And nowhere on here are those, the additional ones that you're going to bring before us after we decide on this?
I have them, I have them here, um, actually, Mr. Buckley is here to explain one of them. And the other is, uh, for an item that, that actually, prior to town meeting, the CIPC voted. And made it their number one recommendation for replacement with, uh, that's safety equipment. Um, to be used by budgetary or, or, um, ARPA funds if, if available. Which that item, I will tell you, is the SCBA unit for the fire department. And it has so far outlived its life, uh, by three years, so it's got a shelf life of twenty years. And it's twenty-three plus years o- old and they roughly in the last year put about four K in repairs and maintenance into it. That item has gone up from the first initial submittal by fire three years ago from, um, seventy-five thousand dollars. As we've talked about before, to ninety-five thousand dollars now. I think it's a good time to move to get that, um, approved, as it was a number one recommendation of CIPC to get that, to get that approved and, and off the books. The other, as Mr. Buckley can explain, is, um, uh, fifty thousand dollars for a temporary construction easements. For the Palmigusset Road project, so. When you're ready, I'm certain, I'm sure Mr. Buckley, who's all by himself in the general audience, will explain that.
So I, I.
Is that on the list?
Which one?
I don't see that.
The last one that you said?
No, those three are not on this list, those are things that we discussed at ARPA committee meeting today.
So I'll make a motion to accept the police adjustment of six thousand nine hundred and fifty dollars of ARPA funds.
Second.
Roll call?
Clock aye.
Galvin abstain.
Nichols aye.
White man aye.
And then Benoit aye.
Okay, and then I will make a motion for approval for the SCBA breathing air compressors. For ninety-five thousand dollars for the fire department.
Second.
For discussion, everything has gone up. I know it's outlived its life and sorry about the what-ifs, but do we expect like lumber has significantly decreased. Lately, lately, is this something that we could think would decrease by five thousand dollars in the next? I know, I mean, nobody has a crystal ball, but I guess I'm just wondering if it's anything that we might wanna. Mr. Buckley?
It's okay, I'm, all I can say is from the water and suicide, anything mechanical like a pump, anything that's electrical, you've got two problems ahead of you. One, your lead times to purchase them have doubled and tripled and the costs are not moving, if anything, they're going up. So that's a complicated device, it's a, a compressor that provides safe breathing air to fill tanks. It's a lot of moving parts, instinctually I would say, no, that price isn't gonna move on, if anything, it'll go up, I hope that helps.
And through the chair where it's a safety item, that's why I feel.
Yeah, I mean, I, 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 I know, I just had to put that up there.
And then if it goes down, we'll buy a second one.
Wow.
You buy one, get one free.
There we go.
Like, like I said, it's something that we have, we haven't addressed in a while and it's something that's a necessity, so in my opinion, it's something that should probably be asked.
Um, is there any other discussion other than my stupid question?
No question is stupid.
Roll call?
I'm, I'm glad you know the whip went down though, cause I get a bite.
Galvin aye.
Nichols aye.
White man aye.
Benoit aye. Was there something else or is that?
Yes, there was a temporary construction easement regarding Palmigusset Road that will have to be, um, paid for, uh, something. Obviously, this is where we have the money that we'll be responsible for, Joe can explain it better, but it is a temporary construction easement for the sidewalks on Palmigusset.
And this came through the committee?
This came through the committee as well.
Okay, if I may, I have a question. Joe, where was this, um, money allo- going to be allocated from, had we not had ARPA funds? Cause I know that this was a conversation throughout the process.
We have to take it out of chapter ninety.
So it was gonna come out of chapter ninety or?
So it's just that much less roadwork being done, but similar to, in, in the similar vein to the conversation raised by the chair. A lot of the construction costs we faced this season had gone up, simply be, so chapter ninety took some heavy hits. Um, just a friendly reminder, and I know it's been a long evening. Um, August eighth is the last day we can have the hearing to do the, um, the board can do the order of taking for the work on Palmigusset Road. If we don't do the order of taking on August eighth, the project will probably get kicked a year, maybe more. And we'll lose, potentially lose some funding. So this roughly seven million dollar Main Street job from the subdivisions at Richards up to Main Street. The widening and new sidewalks, that's what this is for. To get that funding, we have to comply with state and federal right-of-way, right-of-way takings. And we have to take basically construction easements and some other utility easements as part of this process. They're very strict on how you offer money to folks and there has been two appraisals done. And it's, it's, I, all I can say is the process is tenuous. That, you know, it's very, it's, it's very detail-oriented and we've had to hire a firm to help us get through it. Um, what this money is for is to basically offer folks, uh, to pay them market value for, to have a construction easement. The way the state and the federal government work, if, if that, if those easements aren't in place, this cannot go off for bid. And they will not allow it to proceed. So do you have any questions?
Is a construction easement, sounds temporary to me.
The majority, there are eighty-some odd easements, um, or eighty, eighty-plus easements, probably ninety percent of them are temporary. But we still have to, under federal law, at a minimum, offer our folks market value to be able to use that land in the short term for construction. If we don't do that, we don't get the money, there's no way around that. Please remember the order of taking has to be done out of a container.
Right, and, and so you said offer, some people could.
Some people could decide.
No, that's okay, thank you.
Um, I think Blair Construction.
That we have talked about, it has been done in the past, there was that possibility, but Mr. Buckley's just trying to give us worst case.
So there have been a couple that have donated, I think Blair has already agreed, cause they owned a significant number of parcels. A couple homeowners said that they would, but until the process is done and you have to do what's called a, a order of taking, which you'll vote on, on the eighth. And then the instruments have to be recorded at the courthouse and processed. I hope that answers your question.
So that number also is, we've talked about today, doesn't include the legal fees.
Do I have a motion?
What, we are looking for, how much?
Fifty thousand now.
Oh, fifty thousand.
Of ARPA funds.
I'll make a motion of. I'll make a motion of fif- of fifty thousand dollars to be yours for land takings on Palmigusset Road.
Thank you.
Second.
Any further discussion?
Clock, aye.
Galvin, aye.
Nichols, aye.
Whitman, aye.
Benoit, aye. Thank you.
Thank you.
Was there anything else on ARPA?
Um, I have a question, how can, I think I had asked this before, to get for, if any of us wanted to have something brought before the ARPA committee, I had brought up in meetings, looking at, um, premium pay for our emergency management coordinator throughout the COVID pandemic, because it's a very small stipend that as emergency management coordinator that person receives, and then knowing that CARES money had paid, uh, additional funding to Board of Health and, um, the health agent, but the emergency management coordinator, who is our fire chief, has not received any additional compensation for the time that he had put in as emergency management coordinator, I had asked the previous town administrator what the process was to have that conversation, and wasn't clearly answered, and I think, and I mean, a couple weeks ago, I had asked if it could be brought before the ARPA committee for discussion, or maybe the board here needs to discuss, and then ask the ARPA committee to.
It can certainly be brought forth to the ARPA committee, certainly, but we have to have a dollar amount.
I think he provided that somewhere.
We can't just go in there and, 'cause we don't, we don't know how much to, what what your thoughts are, is the offer, time involved, percentages of.
I have no, I I think he provided the number of hours of OT that he did, so I think we could find that.
Okay. Okay, I I have no, I I just know that he has not been compensated at all for the significant amount of work that he had put in above and beyond. Um, you know, and if it was a short-term emergency, I wouldn't feel, I don't think, I don't think I would feel as strongly about it, given that this has been a year, multiple years long, um, to not have any.
And I understand that, but I can't, it'd be unfair to, actually, the committee itself, for me to go in there, or anybody on the committee to go in there, um, and get a recommendation from the rest of the committee for a dollar amount, so I think it's something that we should discuss and see how we base that, well, we base that dollar amount on, um.
Okay, well, and I guess, right, and I guess I'm, I wasn't sure how to proceed, because we had been brought bef- all the dollar amounts leading up to this had been brought before us as far as a a suggested dollar amount, and we haven't had a whole lot of overs, I mean, we've heard how those numbers have been determined, but we weren't the ones determining those numbers, so I don't have currently in front of me the additional information, maybe that is needed to make a, a reasonable, justifiable ask.
Okay, I think, um, if you would leave, I think you and I should have the discussion with Rebecca when she returns.
Okay. And when is she back?
And then we can, and then we can, she's back, she's back Friday, but we should discuss it next week.
So if we're gonna do it for fire chief, how about the police chief, how about Joe, how about, uh?
Well, they don't, if there were bonuses given to all of the the employees, I think that Lee is talking about is that Seth was in charge of the whole.
As emergency management coordinator.
Additional, so every, I mean, people have already received bonuses for COVID, that's what we just approved additional for the.
All right.
I I think that Seth wrote something in an email, so I can give you, I'll look for the email and, um, see if I can come up with that.
Well, maybe he's happy with what he got, maybe he doesn't want anymore.
And let's do some back.
Yep.
I I I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second. Clock, aye.
Galvin, aye.
Nichols, aye.
Amen.
We can always offer, you could always say no.